I call to order the April 11th, 2019 Board of Directors Study Session to order. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good day, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you all for being here. We will move on to approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, it's been moved by Leslie and seconded by Lori to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The agenda has, all opposed? The agenda has been approved. And for everyone's viewing purposes, David Olson is on the phone with us tonight. If you didn't figure that out already. Okay. We will now look at new business 4.1. Is there a contract with Green Gasaway Architects for project management services for the 2019 Bond Elementary School Projects?
Very briefly, you had authorized me to move ahead with negotiating the contract with our project management firm, Green Gasaway. We have done that, and we're presenting to you the negotiated agreement, including it has been reviewed by attorneys, and I would recommend its approval.
Is there?
Unless you want to make a motion first.
We'll have discussion. Do you want to do a discussion or do you have a question first?
Well, I have a question about, we're not attorneys, and we have this language in front of us, and there isn't a amount in there. We're approving, are trusting you in negotiating the contract?
You are actually approving the contract as it has been negotiated.
And reviewed by our attorneys.
Correct.
Right, but it's kind of, yeah.
Okay.
I'm not sure, I know enough to approve it.
Isn't that the same thing we do with any contract?
Let's move this into discussion. Let's continue on to determine if, is there a motion to approve the contract with Green Gasaway Architects for project management services for the 2019 Bond Elementary School Projects?
I'll move to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there discussion prior to the vote? Okay, nope. With that, it has been moved by Leslie and seconded by Marcia to approve the contract with Green Gasaway Architects, P L L C, for project management services for the 2019 Bond Elementary School Projects. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion has been approved. Okay, we also have in front of us 4.2 Draft Architecture Contract. A draft architect contract is being presented as information item to the board.
So what is, what you have is the basic framework of an architect contract. Our project management firm is in fact negotiating the final contract with each of our three architects and our, for our four projects, but we wanted you to see the basic framework and contents of a typical architect contract prior to that coming to you in the next meeting two weeks from now. If there are questions, I would ask you to contact me anywhere between now and probably about the 23rd, at least a couple days ahead of time, so we can try to get any information you need, and you will also see the completed architect contracts prior to being presented that evening.
So this is presented to us as information only at this point. Is there any discussion? Okay, my own, I do, Marcia? No?
I mean, at some point, do we have, because there's different projects, two schools for one and one each for the others, does the board receive any indication of what the scope of that fee may be? I mean, I know you have to negotiate an amount, and it will be separate, and it'll be based on the MAC and all the rest of that. We read that.
I can definitely give you that information, yes.
That would be great.
And so Art, for clarifications for myself, the draft contract that we have in front of us is the contract that's being presented to architects right now, correct?
Yes, but it's all, they're already in the process of, I guess, we present and they counter offer in certain areas, and each project is a little different, so the four contracts will be somewhat different in their final form.
This is the basis of it, and then from then, but it's already been presented?
Correct.
All right. Anybody else? David?
No, I'm good.
We will then move on to the consent agenda, item five. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda prior to the vote? Lots of information here, we've done through it all. Sorry.
It's not in front of the concerned members.
Okay. With that, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it has been moved by Marcia and seconded by Lori to approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. We will now ask Jeff Green to give us a project management update report. Jeff Green with Green Gasaway.
We're set up.
Give you a table.
I didn't set this up correctly, so if you two would have a seat, we'll get you a microphone, and you can be heard by all. I apologize.
I already had sequencing.
Do you want two mics, or you guys will be okay?
I think we're good.
You guys don't have to go all the way to the back. Come on all, and we'll call you back.
So you addressed the PM contract just now, so it's the first item. That's actually a huge step. We've had initial meetings with all three architects on all four projects. We've presented them, the contract as you have seen it, for their review and comment, so they have to review it with their attorneys and their insurance people. There will be a fee structure associated with each project, so there, we anticipate four contracts with the architects, one for each school, and for each school, there will be a fee structure attached that you'll be able to review. We may or may not be able to get all four of those contracts to you on the 25th, so it could stretch on, but the architects will be starting next week under some form of an agreement, which will probably be a short form agreement that'll get incorporated into the contract once the contracts are finalized. So the due diligence work at the Boys and Girls Club is progressing with intensity. On all of our sites, if you see markings on the ground, yellow and orange markings, that's the pre-work, the locate services that come out before our due diligence consultants go out and do survey and other work on the site. So I know at Boys and Girls Club where I was today, that's all marked up with paint all over the ground, and the surveyors were there actually today. So a number of our citizens, or at the Ardendale or Evergreen, you may see the district's consultants out doing some of the preparatory work already on those sites. And we've, we'll have the architect do part of their due diligence walkthrough next week at the Boys and Girls Club. There's also a pre-application meeting that's been scheduled for the Boys Club on April 24th, both as part of the project and as part of the due diligence process. So we have a number of questions and documents that will be submitting to the city as part of the due diligence process. We have pre-application meetings for both of the city projects scheduled on the 24th, so for both the Harbor Hill site and for the Boys and Girls Club site. On that, on the afternoon of the 24th, we'll be meeting with the city, and part of what we'll be looking for is the process and timelines for permitting, and that'll input. For those of you that are interested in our Gantt chart, their input will affect the schedule and of how we approach the projects to get them permitted in time for our bidding. Architects will be touring the sites next week. We'll have, we have scheduled meetings at the Evergreen and Ardendale site for the following, the week following spring break, I believe. So I think Ardendale is scheduled for the evening of April 23rd, and Evergreen is scheduled for the evening of April 24th. Ardendale meeting time, I think, has been set at 6:00 PM, and Evergreen, we're waiting to confirm a time. We are anticipating a small project at Boys and Girls Club this summer to get ready for next year, so we think it'll be very small scale, but we do expect to bring a project forward and assuming we can get a permit to do a little bit of work there. So, and we're working on a more systematic communication process so that we can post information, because it gets very exciting when we get architects on the site, but we'll be looking for a way of posting information and updates onto the district webpage.
Yeah, so I just wanted to add that with all the meetings with the architects, that, you know, they were all very positive meetings, they're all very excited to get going, and they just can't wait to be involved with the communities and get those buildings designed and ready to go. So there's commitment level from them, and we're, we think we got a great group that we brought on, so.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Any questions?
Questions from the board? David?
No.
I do have one question, just more of a clarification and expansion on number six. Can you talk a little bit more about the community meetings, or the onsite meetings at Ardendale and Evergreen on April 23rd and 24th? What the intent of those meetings are, and who's invited, and all of that?
So the district's been working with the principal to make sure that the communities are invited, so the community would include the staff and PTA and other interested parties. So the initial meeting is just an introduction. Here's who we are, and here's who the architects are, and here's how we would gather information. So it's, these are advisory groups. I believe that they're both, would then ask for people who are interested to participate on an every other week basis through the end of May, so that we could get feedback on what they thought the issues at their facilities were. So in both cases, we're replacing the school, so we don't need to know what doesn't really work in the existing school. But the feedback group, or the group that volunteers to participate, would be, the architects would then have somebody that they could show, here, what if we put the school here or there? Here's what we think is a good idea, what do you see the pluses and minuses of that idea? So that we would have feedback from the site about how they thought, or what the issues might be based on where we, or architects might think the facility improvements could be made. So they may say, oh, if you put it there, the playground's not going to work right, so how are you going to address that? So they would raise issues that we may not be sensitive to. We would then, our plan would be to bring back in June, the result of this would be an image at the June 13th meeting that then could go back to the communities for comment, and we would ask for authorization at the June 27th meeting to proceed to complete our schematic design over the summer, so.
As we move forward, that group also would be a group that we could give information to, so that they know where we're at the process, and they could take that out to the community and get some clarity from, you know, to their people they're talking to as well.
And the bigger group would be invited to participate from time to time, so we'd give regular updates to keep the community informed about the bidding schedule or the work schedule. And we would, so it wouldn't be just this spring, in the fall, we would be showing the design submitted that we've made to the jurisdictions, and we would invite people to know what our bid schedule was when we anticipate starting construction. In some cases, we may have to modify parent drop off at certain points in time, so there's all that little details that would go to the bigger community, but we would be advised by the smaller group that would be basically providing input on things that are working or not working, or what they thought would work best.
Since that first, this, the meetings on the 23rd and 24th are kind of introduction meetings, would it be appropriate to invite like Pennant Parks, or somebody that uses the facilities on a regular basis as well for input?
That's a great suggestion. I'm sure we would have thought of that eventually, but, thank you. Yes, there's a lot of non-school users that we need to make sure they're on board, they understand what's happening.
Okay.
And thank you for that.
As you look at the meetings that are open to the larger communities and interested parties, if you could think about the timing of the publication of the KP News, so that they can be invited, they're going to be very interested in Evergreen, and will want to report on that, and I don't know if, if it makes sense to have a news person on an advisory committee like that, and I don't know if they have the time to commit, but the timing to get that information out to the KP is important.
Thank you. And that's, I think, another place where we should be sure we have relevant information provided, so we appreciate that.
And ditto on the KP Art District.
Right.
Yes. All right, thank you very much for that update. Look forward to that.
Madam President, could I piggyback on that for just a moment?
Yeah.
Today, we received the results from Moody's, the Moody's Investment Service. They are the organization nationally that rates the school district in terms of selling bonds. So today, we received the rating action. Moody's assigns an AA2 underlying with a AA1 enhanced to the Peninsula School District. We got the feedback that not only did we maintain a very strong rating, but they were, they were actually debating, they were right on the edge of giving us an upgrade, which we would not have anticipated, but certainly would have enjoyed. The, the reality is, I want to read two sentences in particular. The district's finances are stable. In today's school districts in Washington, that's a, that's a huge statement, and it's a compliment, and it's followed by, with healthy reserves, supported by prudent management practices. And I read that specifically to give Karen Anderson great credit. Moody's was very impressed. We spent quite some time answering their questions in great detail, and they examined sort of every part of your, your finances to see whether or not we're a good credit risk. They were very impressed, and Karen specifically drew that prudent management, and I, it's one of the high compliments that you could get, so I, thank you for giving me a minute to share that, but that has been released publicly. There will also be information coming to you that, as far as part of their research that they did in the school district, and it's very complimentary.
Well, congratulations on that, and to all of you at the district for, for that, that's fantastic, and we were so close to the AA1 rating, that it was more about other districts and not us, that we stayed there, but thank you very much.
Any idea when that will become public?
It was released today.
Oh, okay, because this says draft.
That was draft as of eight o'clock this morning, or whatever time that came in.
Well, that's great.
Okay. All right, thank, anything else?
No.
Okay. All right, we will then move into our study session, and we're going to start with 6.1 and invite our guests back up with the Healthy Youth Survey. And Pat Cummings, Becky Maffey, and Erin O'Neil will be presenting a summary of results of the Healthy Youth Survey.
If I may, just for a moment, introduce Pat Cummings to the world. This is a world that has known Pat Cummings in the past, so he's not a stranger to everyone here. There's something in my makeup that does not feel comfortable if people are retired. And especially when we have a need. In this case, Jen was, of course, taking care of herself and her husband, and so we called upon Pat Cummings in his retired status just across the other side of the bridge to ask if he could help us out on our assessment and the spring season for assessment, and I just want to publicly say thank you to an outstanding professional, and I have worked with Pat before in my career, and it is just a delight to work with him again, so I'm very proudly introducing Pat Cummings to present our Healthy Youth Survey summary and his guest.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And I'll just add to that, that my morning started with me asking my wife, where are my ties? Where are my? Thank you for that. The overview of the Healthy Youth Survey, two years ago, Becky and Jen presented the results, and we used their template to update the results and modified it slightly. The Healthy Youth Survey is one of the better things that the state does. It's a survey that's administered every two years to all of our sixth grade, eighth grade, 10th and 12th grade in the state, and it is a cooperative effort from OSBI, Department of Health, the Liquor Board, now the Liquor and Cannabis Board, and it is designed to look at the general health of our students in a wide variety of ways. To the next slide. So here are the, here are the goals. Looking at adolescent health, looking at the trends and patterns, helping us set policy in our district. We use the results to set policy for grant writing, to monitor progress, and to just really keep your finger on the pulse of what's going on with our young adolescents. Over 200,000 kids take this survey this year, this October. We have well over 2,000 of our students take the survey. The participation rates we have are slightly better or equal to the state. It's about nine out of 10 of our sixth graders and eighth graders, three out of four of our, the, or sixth and eighth graders, three out of four of our 10th graders. The high school participation rate, this is voluntary, you don't have to take this, and so for our seniors, we run around 50%, and so does the, so does the state. So it's a very, if you're looking at just sample size, it's a very valid sample size in looking at our students. All right, what is the Healthy Youth Survey? Well, it measures substance use, they just added vaping a couple of years ago, cigarettes, mental health, so whether or not people are feeling depressed or anxious. They added a question in 2006, if you're depressed, do you have someone you can reach out to and talk to? It's a school climate, bullying, do you feel that if you were bullied, there's an adult would listen to you and help you? Even things like, you know, do you have a boyfriend that you think is too controlling? Or, you know, had all of the ASIS items are added on to that. They add really an eclectic group of other items of, how many soft drinks do you drink? That's related to our obesity issue. How much exercise do you get? How much screen time do you have? You know, like I said before, there are also a separate set of questions that deal with gender identity and some of those other questions that we're, are putting on our radar, so I'm going to turn this over to Erin.
Good to see you all. Thank you. So a couple of things, as Pat mentioned, there are lots of factors that are, that we get data from, and we're just going to focus on a few tonight. It doesn't mean you don't have access to the data, and this shows you can get there from our homepage, but I'm glad to send you the link to, on more information. We're going to look at just a few things. One is substance abuse and use, second is anxiety and depression, and third is protective factors, or those things that keep our kids, that mitigate the risk that our kids face. So when we think about substance abuse, cigarette smoking, we were talking about this earlier today, and how times really have changed from, I know, when I was a teenager. And as you can see from the data, a couple of things, it's really low use in our district. However, there are two, two things I want to talk about. One is you can see from our seniors, and you'll notice seniors will show some statistically significant difference throughout a few of these things, but as you can see here, our seniors smoke tobacco a little bit more than this state average, 15% compared to 8%.
Can I jump in real quick?
Please.
Let me just explain this chart to you. This table here is in all of our charts. It's showing you this year's results, six, eight, 10, 12, but then we also look at the other years for the trend, so it's showing you, are there trends going in one way or the other? Are they going up, or are they staying stable? So this is an important table to look at. The other is on the graphs, the dark blue is Peninsula, and the lighter color is the state. And these little funny lines here are important lines to look at, because we're only going to show you a handful of charts, but when you go online to our district website, you're going to see all the charts, so being sensitive of how to read this data is important. The confidence intervals are these lines that are going up and down here. Obviously, the state has 200,000 students, so their confidence intervals are much smaller, ours are much larger. If you see on this confidence intervals that the two lines don't line up, in other words, if, if at any point in time the two lines are equal, then we're pretty much statistically responding like the state. But if they- But if they are not equal, then that means we can, we are statistically significantly different than the state. And so we put a little asterisk here to reference that. And you can see for our 12th graders, like Erin said, that we're higher use, and that 15 percent compared to 8 percent is a statistical significantly difference.
Yeah, thank you for that. I want to add just one more thing, and I'll show you up here. As you go diagonally, these are the same kids. So this is over time, kids at 12th grade. But when you look at six through 12, if you go diagonally in any of those patterns, they're the exact same kids. And I shouldn't say exact, because it's voluntary, but the same grade level of kids.
Generally, the same group of kids.
Yeah. So that leads us to a trend that's happening, you know, across the United States, and that's looking at vaping. Vaping was originally intended, they say, marketing-wise, to actually reduce cigarette smoking and eventually encourage people to quit. But it's actually created a whole new market with teenagers who have probably never smoked tobacco before going straight to vaping. And so you can see a couple of things. One is over time, our kids, the fact that they've used them in the past six years has stayed pretty steady, but it's still a pretty high percentage of our students who are vaping. And it's not just our students who will find this statewide, we'll also find it nationwide. And there are a couple of factors. That's due to no smell. So kids can do it pretty much anywhere and not get caught, for lack of a better word. Another is they marketed to kids because of the flavors. That's very enticing for our kids. And it's specifically marketed, when we think about the packaging and the colors and the text, to our kids. So this is a real nationwide dilemma. One of the things, and Becky will talk about it a little bit, about some plans. We think that this is a critical in our district and some plans to help mitigate that over time. Then alcohol, we have some good news, and that's really a declining trend in the use of alcohol with our kids. If you see, eighth, 10th, and 12th grade has all gone down since two years, this survey was done two years ago. And that's good news. However, the seniors, again, you'll notice statistically significant difference between alcohol use in the state and then in our area. Then binge drinking, or the percent of students who report having five or more drinks in a row in the past two weeks, that's kind of scary, right? And again, while stable over time, we still see that it is a problem in our community. The seniors, those doggone seniors, a little bit higher, again, than the state average. We haven't been able to really pinpoint why, why that is in our population, how their behaviors are a little bit risky for this particular class, but we haven't dove deep into that either, because we haven't noticed that trend again until this year.
So what this is saying, just to make it clear...
You bet.
Is of the 12th graders that we're surveying at all three of our high schools, however many participated, almost a quarter of them have drank five consecutive drinks.
Two weeks prior to the survey.
Within the past two weeks, yes.
Of the survey, yes.
That's alarming to me.
Right.
But the good news is, they were 20, you know, it was one out of four, now it's one out of five. So it's going down a little bit.
It is going down.
So the issues of...
A little. But that class, two years ago, was at 10 percent. They're now at 20 percent. So they doubled.
And I today...
Can I say something?
Yeah. Yep.
Hello?
David, go for it.
The thing that concerns me is looking at the chart, although we can say, looking at grade 12 over the last couple ones, are short trend going down in alcohol use. If you look at the cohort, go back to the year 2014, our eighth graders, 5 percent were smoking cigarettes. That same group of kids, that cohort, within 2016, now in 10th grade, they went to 6 percent. Same cohort, 2018, or 15 percent. So maybe year-over-year, grade 12, maybe making progress. The cohort, it continues to get worse. The same cohort, kids in 2014 in eighth grade were 9 percent. Maybe those same kids were 15, and now they're 37 percent. So they've gone up four times. If you look at vaping for that cohort, alcohol cohort, 2014, eighth graders, 8 percent. 10th grade, 21. 12th grade, 36. Same cohort, since eighth grade, has gone up four times, the use. So it looks like, as a cohort, those kids are actually doing more drinking, more cigarettes, smoking. And so I'm concerned about that trend more than anything, that we're not doing anything to stop the kids over time. They actually look like they're getting worse, if you follow the cohort.
Those are, those are good observations in reading that. I, I went back today and looked at the 2006 results for the 10th graders, which are now our 12th graders, and I did not see statistically significant differences between that group and the state. Like we're, you know, we have multiple times where we have a little red star with this group. So you are correct. The cohort is increasing, but it wasn't as if when they were in 10th grade, they were remarkably different than the state population.
I would just, I would just like to say, I would love to see a red asterisk. It was much lower than the state rather than double state.
Right. Right.
In building, in building on what David is saying, is that, you know, it is important to be, to have those comps with the state. However, I'm more concerned about our kids. And this, the data here, as David pointed out, just for this cohort of kids is concerning. And I know you guys are also concerned. So yeah, we're absolutely interested in knowing why this is happening and how do we mitigate that.
Yep.
I want to talk a little bit more about that toward the end, too.
And just so you know, there are some positive red asterisks coming up.
Yes.
I promise.
Well, I would think that the, well, as I can see here, that the increase is nationwide. I would think some of that is simply due to access. Like, once a kid can drive, they can, there's a lot more things that can be done and places that can be gone. You know? So I would think that it would be in every case nationwide that a sixth grader is going to participate less in certain things than a 12th grader.
Right.
Right.
Right. We would expect that, yeah. It doesn't mean we're not...
It's not to say we want our 12th graders to be double what the nation average is, but...
Right. And I'm curious, as I'm sure you are as well, regarding the alcohol consumption, you know, is that a culture piece? Right? Is our community, our culture here too permissive in that regard?
All good questions. When we think about the last slide regarding levels of alcohol use, this shows a little bit about just the level of use. And again, as you can tell from the previous couple of slides that we look like, there, again, is a concern that especially heavy drinking is 50 percent higher than the state with regard to heavy drinking. And heavy drinking is defined as six-plus days drinking in the past 30 days and/or two binge drinkings. It could be either and/or those things, constant drinking or binge drinking. On the next slide, a little bit of good news. You know, one of the assumptions when marijuana became legalized is that it is going to create an environment where everybody's going to now, you know, take part in marijuana. And that's really not the case. When we look at this, the use, again, over time, has not increased significantly, except as David alluded to earlier, when we look at, again, that cohort, it has grown a lot. When you compare it to the state, it's not significantly different. And nationally, we see that, too. Actually, there's some research, even though it might not be correlated, that shows medical marijuana that's become legal actually decreases the overall use. But again, we don't know that that, correlation doesn't mean causation, but that's a general trend that they're seeing nationally, specifically legalized medical marijuana versus for all.
The survey doesn't differentiate?
No. Good question. Our next is anxiety, depression, and bullying. And there's some good news and some concerning news here, too. With regard to depression specifically, and we think about, when we think about all the causes of depression and anxiety, and I'm sure that, I guess I'm not sure, but if you've read social media, the news at all, there's this idea about devices and social media use and depression. And we've seen depression go up really nationwide. And what's really concerning, not only in our district, but again, nationwide, in girls, depression is extremely higher than in our males. And so digging into that a little further, I know, is something that I'm passionate about and that we'll be working on this year. The theories are just the technology use, social media use, lack of supervision, especially with gaming or devices, that kids aren't forced to be off their phones or that sort of thing, because our, we are not off ours. So kind of that modeling that you were talking about with drinking as well. But there is a huge margin between male and females in depression. Contemplation of suicide, also a little bit worrisome, at least for, in my mind, and that is, we are seeing increases in suicide to contemplation across all grade levels. When we think about one in four are struggling with how to face life every day and what we should be doing or what we could be doing to mitigate that, we have some work to do. Bullying, oh, sorry.
When the students see these questions, is this, how is it worded? Is it, have you seriously considered suicide in the past year? Is it that black and white, or is there qualifiers, or is there...
Yes.
There's qualifiers?
No, it's...
It's just that black and white?
Pretty much exactly that way. And there are, there are 100 questions for our eighth through 10th grader, 12th graders on two separate forms. So not every kid gets the same test. And there's like common questions. Everyone's going to get cigarette smoking, sixth graders, everybody. But then they'll add some of the more, and that's why it's such a good survey. You get a huge amount of information by using statistical sampling. You get good valid results for a wide variety of things. And the questions are always changing and being negotiated based on what's going on within our society.
So have we presented this information and talked about to our high schools or our counselors about this yet?
We're going to talk about that, too, tonight.
Because that's, I mean, that's a, like, if I went to the schools and said, 25 percent of your 12th graders have seriously considered suicide, is that reflective of what you're seeing in your schools today? Or are you addressing or keeping watch of 25 percent? So I'd like to understand that, if, what, what reality is that to the schools?
Right. And what are we doing to impact that? So that, oh, sorry.
Hello?
Yep. Yes, please speak.
Thank you. I was actually thinking the exact same thing that Deb said, was that, do we give this Healthy Youth Survey, do we show the results, even if it's just these slides, to our high school kids and let them see these results, to see if they agree with the outcome? I think, you know, our school district, over the past few years, has placed a heavy emphasis on trying to be nicer, to encourage our students to be nicer to each other. If they see a kid sitting by themselves at lunch, you try and go over there and sit with them. And with that, I see that our bullying has been going down. If you look at our eighth graders in 14 versus 16 until 18, sticking with my cohort analysis, they actually show that over that time, they see bullying is going down, which is very good news, where suicide and depression is going up. And I don't understand, bullying is going down, why are our kids so depressed and feeling so hopeless? And I know I'm going to jump ahead and I apologize, but if I look at the slides that are coming up, it doesn't correlate to me why they are feeling so hopeless and depressed and contemplating suicide when they feel so safe at school and have someone to talk to. It just doesn't make sense to me. So I think giving this information to the students and letting them process it and figure out what they think is the remedy might be helpful.
Well, I think the point, part of this is, this stimulates discussion on these issues. There's a lot of data showing that these trends in depression began in about 2012. There's speculation of why that occurred, what were the features in our society. The statistics are unfortunately supported by hospital admissions for people with depressive episodes and cutting episodes and so forth. So I, it, what it does is, that goes back to my original slide. This is important. We need to get our, we need to get our hands on what's going on with this. And if there are specific interventions that need to be much more aggressive associated with depression and anxiety with certain groups, then this is, this is giving us that permission to be more assertive in working with those youngsters.
And the other thing, I think, to what David is saying, when you look at the idea that bullying is going down, students are feeling safe at school, and yet they're still reporting these high levels of depression and suicidal ideation, it just tells us, those are not simple issues. They're really much more complex than, let's just be nice to each other and everybody will be happy. We really need to think about it a little bit more carefully about what, what is depression? What is anxiety? What does cause it and what can we do to intervene?
And is it usually, I mean, we know what bullying looks like, but, but I think there are other internal things going on at these grade levels as students mature. Is it readily identifiable even by a counselor? I mean, students are so different.
Well, there's different types of bullying. You know, there's punching the arm for your lunch money. There's sending inappropriate internet, you know, that's only 5 percent. There's relational bullying, which is the clique, the kind of the mean girls bullying, and that's the highest percentage. So it, you know, the counseling staff, they, they just use this as just a, a kind of permission to work on much more specific aspects to support these things, so...
Well, and I don't want us to kind of make that relation that, I agree with what Becky is saying, that it is a very complex issue. It's not a one thing that is causing these behaviors, these feelings in our kids. It's very complex, as what Marcia was indicating as well. So I don't want us to focus, the board to focus solely on that one thing. There's a lot of things, there are things outside of school that we have no control over. I think that you guys have been working with the counseling staff to try to kind of make it a little bit more robust and identifying. So I think that this data is sort of supporting what you've always suspected and were worried about. So I am curious to see, you know, how we're going to move forward. I'm also curious as to why sixth grade was not included in this survey, in this particular, for the contemplation suicide.
This particular question, as Pat mentioned, they, they ask certain questions of sixth graders, but they don't ask all the questions. And that's, that's just part of how the, the study is designed. And I don't know that I can answer exactly why they choose certain questions and not other questions, but...
Well, they wouldn't ask gender identity in sixth grade.
Can I ask you one question? Do you, is there a slide, and maybe not in our presentation tonight, I haven't looked through the 300-page document yet, the other survey. We have a slide for, do they feel safe at school? But do we ask them the question, do they feel safe at home?
We can get you every single question.
No, no, it's available to me in the large document, because I know sometimes in the past, we've gotten a whole 300-page document, a lot to go through. I just, I want to know, do you know if they asked that question, do you feel safe at home? If the answer is yes, I can find that data myself.
There, there are some specific, and we're going to get to in future slides here, about protective factors, and some of those are school-related and some are community-related. And it's good to, to keep that in mind, because it's not just school issues. You know, we need to be looking at all of that, absolutely.
There are more specific reports that we make available to all of the counselors. And when you're seeing the big PowerPoint that's posted on our website, that's the PowerPoint that has all of the slides. Then there's other reports, and so there would be 400 kids at a grade level responded to that. But then there are... But then there are other reports that only 200 kids responded. Because remember I said it's half, take this and half take that? And that's where some of the details of these more nuanced questions are held. And we, and you know, the more people look at this and process it and help us try to understand what we need to do, the better. So we can provide those to you easily.
I don't know, I'm not sure if you actually talked about bullying, but I did wanna point out something in your notes. So if you're, Pat mentioned the relational aggression and that we think of as girl bullying. And statistically, that relational aggression piece is way more frequent in both boys and girls. It's really not the case that boys bully one way and girls bully another way. The, by far, the highest, the biggest amount of bullying for boys and girls is through relational aggression. And so, you know, like Marsha mentioned, we know what bullying looks like well. We know what some types of bullying look like, and other types are much more hard to pin down. And so it's, it's a complex issue, for sure.
So when we think about protective factors and those things that help mitigate risk in students, two things that we're presenting tonight, one is that our students have somebody in their community that they feel connected to and that they can talk about something, someone they trust. And here's some really great data of our community, that kids do feel like they have someone that they can talk to with. That said, and I'm a Pollyanna, but it still worries me that two out of 10 kids don't have an trusting adult that they feel like they, they can go to, and that's one out of five. So we have some work to do there. And then, you know, something else, and I know a lot of our schools have been working on culture and being kind and that setting that safe space. And we've got some great results for that, too, that our kids feel safe once they get there. I'm really intrigued about David's question, and I'll be sure and look into that. Do our kids feel safe at home? The community, though, that we provide for them when they go to school, we're doing good work and will continue to do that. I'm gonna ask Becky to talk about, she visited with you a couple of years ago, she and Jen, and made some recommendations at that time. We wanna share with you the progress that we've made in those areas, and then also where we think the next best steps are with this information.
So, two years ago, Jen and I came to the board and talked about five kind of main areas of recommendations after having dug deeply into the survey at that point and what we saw and what we thought we really needed to focus on. We'd worked with a group of counselors to come up with those recommendations and some highlights there. It was really interesting for me to look back at our notes from that and say, oh yeah, we did that. We did that. I feel like we've made some real progress here. And then here's an area where we still have a long ways to go. And so just some highlights of that, talking about specialized drug and alcohol counseling. That's something that we've put some work into as a district and we haven't gotten there yet. We've made some efforts to try and really get some, some, and that's, we think about all of these risky behaviors, and you wanna look at both prevention and intervention. And so on the intervention side, when we have kids who are using drugs and alcohol, what do we do to support them and their families and to turn, turn those things around for them? It's an area where we continue to talk and we continue to work on, and we still really have some work to do in that area, I think. Strengthening the relationships with community health, community mental health resources. We've done a lot of work in that area as well. Counselors specifically have really strengthened their relationships with comprehensive life resources, with some other community resources in the group. We've worked with, with the Harbor Christian Center and communities and schools have helped us over the last two years to create a resource fair called the Compassion Summit. That's been really successful, where we've brought different community resources in to interact with counselors and other school people to really help, help our school professionals understand what's available in the community for students and families. And that's been really successful. Strengthening, I'm gonna come back to number three, because I think that's a really important one that leads us into our next steps. But continued development and implementation of proactive social skills and health curriculum. Erin and I and some others in the district have really been working hard this year with high school health teachers to really update and align our health curriculum with the state standards and looking at also connecting with community resources and bringing in guest speakers. And we're talking now about that very question you brought up, about how do we share this information with our kids? And I think through our health classes, a really natural way to do that, and at least in one place. So that's something we're really talking about, how to implement that within our health classes. Like I said, we've worked really hard with high school health teachers over the last year, and now we're really starting to focus on middle school health over the next year and what that looks like, and having some systemic consistency around what our students are learning in the classroom about health behaviors. Number five, increasing parent-family education and collaboration. I think there've been some really exciting things around parent education over the last couple of years. Tonight, Erin, I know, is gonna be leaving from here and going over to Harbor Ridge. They're having a viewing of a film, Like, which is actually about the topic of how social media influences kids' health. They, that's part of a series that Harbor Ridge has done for parents over the last few months. We've had some forums with different people from schools and from communities. And so lots of opportunities that have kind of, I feel like, been increasing for parents in different places. And I think we're working to make those things more systemic and more collaborative so that it's not just an opportunity here for this little group of parents, an opportunity here, but more opportunities that are open to everyone across our community. So those are things.
I might add, not a one and done, but that we offer Nice Like Tonight on how to deal with anxiety and social media, for example, that we offer it repeatedly over time, over the course of years, so that folks who don't get the chance to attend still have the chance to participate and learn.
Right, right. Also, just wanted to mention, Communities and Schools has been a really important partner with a lot of our parenting outreach work. And Communities and Schools on the Key Peninsula, just starting, I think it's starting next week, or it might be right after spring break, they're starting a seven-week parenting course that's open to all, for parents at the Key Peninsula Elementary Schools. And it'd be open to others, I'm sure, but they're advertising to all three elementaries on the, on the KP with a positive discipline course. And so a lot of that stuff has really been through Communities and Schools and in collaboration with Harbor Care Center and with Children's Home Society. And so a lot of that work has been kind of increasing, I think.
Have you noticed an impact with the work that Bob Anderson has done with the Suicide Prevention Program? And we lost a student the day after school was out last year. Bringing Kevin Hines in and having some of those trainings. I've learned a lot in the last year about suicide, suicide prevention and that, that whole scope.
I think that's been, that's a great example of really that community partnership piece. And that Suicide Prevention Coalition was started several years ago, and that was sort of started by the district and then sort of floated out into the community. And it's really become a genuine partnership with a lot of people in the community working together and, and creating those, those opportunities for people to learn more and to talk more. And what research really shows helps with suicide prevention is that we talk about it more. And so really getting people to start talking about those tough subjects. And I think, again, like Pat was saying, if we can use this Healthy Youth Survey to start conversations that are tough conversations, then we're gonna have better results. Going back to number three, that strengthening of adult-student relationships and the development of a K-12 continuum of support. The reason I wanted to come back to that one is I think it's gonna lead a little bit into some things that they're gonna be talking about in the next presentation. But as we were looking at, what were the things that counselors have really been looking at or working on in the past couple of years around this? What I think we've learned from that is that it's really important that we broaden that scope more and more. And then it's not just about what counselors are doing, but how we're all working together for more robust systems that support all students, that all of us as adults in this community are coming together to support students. And that's, that's within our school community, but also within our greater community. And how can we build those relationships and, and really looking at supporting the whole child? So those are exciting conversations that I'm seeing happen more and more, and I think are, are sort of building initiatives in our district.
Another thing I would like to add, you mentioned the work with counselors. We've been really working hard on, one is what is a comprehensive school counseling model and how can they have the biggest impact on our students? And then also, I think we've kind of been in a little bit of a mode of reaction versus prevention. And so creating a system of supports where all students get access to information that can help them cope, can help them, you know, deal with complications and the complexities of life. And then how can we develop a system where folks who need, our kids who need deeper help, that, that we address that? So that's really exciting. And I think when we think about the counselors and their work, they're thinking more and more about that.
So as we move forward with this, looking at where we've been and where we're going, like I said, I think next steps clearly for us are those bigger conversations about how do we make some of these interventions and things more systemic and more preventive? How do we work better together to support all students? How do we, you know, dig deeper into the data to really understand what's going on and that these are complex issues and it's not as simple as, well, you know, solve this and then if we just did this, then that would be solved? They're really complex issues. And so that's why it takes a lot of people working together to make improvements. And really using this information, this data, as we design and develop systems within our, within our school district that are supportive of all of our students. So that's the plan moving forward. So we've been talking a lot about, we've, we've looked at it with, with counselors a little bit. We have some more work to do there. But we're also really having conversations about what other groups do we need to be digging into this with? You know, how is, what's the best way to share the right kind of information with all the stakeholders, with students, with parents, with staff, with community at large?
And likely not being able to tackle it all at once, how can we tackle a few things? And what impact do we wanna have and show? And then let's come back in two years and show you that we've made a difference by focusing on a few things.
Building on that concept, Erin. And I asked Art this question a couple of days ago. Are there things in this Healthy Youth Survey that should be a direction for our goal-setting in a healthy school environment that we could use? Something that we could, I don't know. We don't do the work, but how, are there things that we can do to change that environment for our youth? You don't have to answer it.
Yes.
All of the above doesn't make sense.
Yeah, I think it's important.
It's the most concerning.
It's important that we look at, at the whole picture of the whole child as we're making our plans for how we're educating kids, that, that we're thinking about their overall wellness, because that impacts everything else. I also think there's a lot of research that tells us what are the things that we can do that will impact different things. And a lot of that has to do with, I think, what you just turned to. But just the idea that the communities, building community sustainability and capacity within communities and really partnering strongly between schools and communities as a whole shows really big returns in almost all of these areas.
And it all gets down to caring about the kids, making sure our kids and each other feels cared for, valued, and loved. And until that level is met by building a culture that fosters that, academics aren't gonna happen. We're, we're not gonna be able to correct the course for these kids.
Thank you for addressing the systemic part of it. I, I appreciate that. I also noted that, and you may have mentioned this in a previous presentation that I just don't remember, that specializing in the drug and alcohol counseling, is there any consideration of focusing on the mental health piece? And are our counselors prepared to handle that? They are kind of the first line. I think it's absolutely critical, and I agree with you, that it's wonderful that we're having all these community partners. But I also feel and wonder, you know, what does that look like in the, in our buildings in order to encourage that? And I'm also wondering-
Just picking your mic a little bit more left.
I'm also wondering if through the Compassion Summit, are we tracking the number of students and families that are accessing those resources? Has that grown? What does that look like? Is there a way to do that? You know, just making those touch base. And I know that our ratios to counselor to students is not ideal, but it's something that we're working towards. I'm also hoping that we can update next year. I know we're not gonna have the Healthy Youth Survey, but just to see what the progress looks like and to see if there's any other kind of board support that you would want to have.
One thing I wanna acknowledge the board is the support of additional counselors. Our ratios, especially relative to the state, this year are at the best that we've seen in a long time. That said, only being eight months in, we don't have great impact to show you yet. But we also know we're changing the system by working with counselors and their role in the schools. So we will see it. But we are ahead of the game on that, and I'm excited to be able to share the impact as we see it.
And to the mental health question specifically, I think there's, there's, again, both pieces of prevention and intervention. And so one really important part there is the work we're doing with the health curriculum and really focusing on building wellness and the skills of, of maintaining wellness and how to, how to support that as an individual, how to, how to keep yourself well and how to know early when you need to reach out for help in terms of mental health and kind of normalizing those conversations and around suicide specifically and mental health in general. I think those are conversations that, that we're, we're trying to create and trying to build from a prevention side. And then also at a, at an intervention side, building that capacity with, you know, with our comprehensive life resources, our working with students directly in some of our schools. And so building some of that capacity. But I think that there's more room to be had, not just, I mean, I'm a counselor, and so I think counselors are really important in schools. And the whole system needs, needs to think about what are all the pieces that work together to support mental health, and nurses and social workers and all of those people, and how does that system work together?
But also changing the culture in our schools so the kids aren't looking at our counselors solely as an academic counselor, but also that they can help them in other ways as well, that whole child piece. And then I'm actually also curious, and you don't have to answer it today, but tracking over time, how many parents are participating? And for those parents that, 'cause usually the parents that come are not necessarily the parents that we need to reach, and how are we expanding that?
Yeah, just a quick question, which you may have answered already. But did you say that, that there is a sort of a formal way? Is this information presented to the students, other than they can access it probably, but?
We haven't in the past formally presented this information to students. And we've just been talking about, I mean, that keeps coming up, is how, how, what's the best way to do that? What's the best place and the best format?
I'm just looking at these numbers and I'm thinking that, let's just take depression. If you were struggling with that and had never talked to anyone about it, and you saw that 41% of the people in the room where you were sitting had the same, that's powerful. In, in a potentially really helpful way. Or certainly the 25% suicide stat. I mean, I would think it would be a powerful tool for the students to actually get this back, this info.
And there's a lot of research that backs what you're saying, and the idea of social norming in that we, when we talk about what's, what's really happening with people, it normalizes the conversation in a way that people are able to get more support.
David, do you have any questions, comments?
Oh, no, I'm good. I appreciate the conversation.
Thank you. Thank you. I believe there was some training started for teachers on identifying alcohol, cigarette-smoking, e-cigarettes in the classrooms. Am I making this up, or?
I'm gonna have to look to Dan and John, not that I'm aware of.
Not that I was aware of.
Okay, okay. 'Cause I definitely hear that in the community, that there's been an increase. I don't know where they're getting their data or just from hearing it from their kids, that there's an increase of kids coming to school drunk or using an e-cigarette in classroom. Right, so like, providing, like, how, how do we help our teachers identify that? I don't know if that's something that would help. I mean, those are the people that have eyes on a smaller group of kids at a time during the day, so.
Well, not only how they identify it, but what's the response to.
Exactly, like, what do they do with that? And maybe that comes into what John Yeloise is gonna talk about as well. But, and then the other thing, and you may know this, the, I know this is all, this is volunteer. You don't have to take this test or quiz.
Survey.
Survey, thank you. The typical profile of someone that would take it, so I think about people that participate in surveys are usually engaged people. And if you think about that, and so are kind of non-engaged people who may have more issues and more problems and more anxiety are not taking it. So is there a profile of what students are taking?
That would only be applicable for our 12th grade, and we thought we needed to dive into that a little more. There's so, when you have nine out of 10 kids taking it in, you know, sixth and eighth grade, that's- grade.
Right, that's, yeah, no, that's fine. That's true.
Even a survey of 75, people would die to have a 75%.
Yeah.
So it goes to the issue of those who take it at the 12th grade. And in general, what's interesting is that the, the way you would find out, some of those issues are the results stable over time and do the results in our district kind of look like the results in the state? And they generally do, except for portions of this 12th grade class, so. But that's exactly right, you know, the who's most likely to respond to, what was that? That very, very famous Cheryl Hyde study? Remember the Cheryl Hyde study?
Nope. It's very famous.
So I used to teach a general psychology, and you always bring up the Cheryl Hyde study. And the Cheryl Hyde study was a study on women and their satisfaction with their relationship with men. And the study was just scathing. They were just, you know, they didn't like them. But it's used because the sample came from an online sample in Cosmopolitan magazine, and only the people that would take the survey were the people that were just, had had it. So you had this, you had this skewed sample, and it's used to teach people how, she had 10,000 people take the survey, but the sample was so skewed because it wasn't representative of the general population. So I think that's your, your.
Okay, excellent. Do you have anything else, Dr. Jarvis?
I think my, my general comment would be, these are our children. In this community, in this school system, it is a valid survey, and it needs to be part of our, what do we need to do? And we'll lead directly into our next presentation as we talk our student services, but it is something that is not just, here's another survey and check it off and. It is, suicide alone can say nothing of some of the other is, is very disturbing. We do reflect our society. It's not just the schools, it's not just our children, but neither are we immune to that, that somehow we're okay and it's the rest of the world that's got a problem. So that'd be my comment, that as we listen to this next piece, we're going to be talking about our program and, and that, and really the, the whole system of how do we address some of what we've seen recognizing full well. We're not going to change it overnight. We're not going to change it in a year. It, it's going to be the challenge of my saying that you've heard before, kids who are not successful find their own back door, and risk-taking is part of that. So it is a huge challenge for us and absolutely critical.
Well, Pat and Becky and Erin, thank you for bringing this to us, and appreciate this and look forward to hearing how progress is coming along with that.
Thank you.
All right, we will then move on to the presentation that's been mentioned several times, Student Services Annual Report and the MTS S Planning Multi-Tierred Student Services.
Right.
And we have John Yeloise and Lisa Ray with us tonight to present.
Okay, thank you for having us back. So we have Student Services, where's the clicker? Update today, and we're going to talk about several of the most major programs that fall under our umbrella, Student Services, Early Childhood and Preschool, the EL program, Title LAP. And talk a little about our nurses and health and wellness to follow up on some of the data that you just heard about in the Healthy Youth Survey and Special Education. So Lisa Ray is here to present with me today, and she's going to cover the first few slides. Oh, thank you. Okay. There we go.
So it's been a busy year in our early childhood world. We started off having to find a new location for one of our sites, as you know, and so that has been a big area of focus, but we have remained kind of streamlined and focused on three areas of support, really thinking about access to services for preschool children, both through the developmental preschool and our E-CAP program. And if you look at our numbers, we are full, we're getting there. We are, over half of our programs are either at or above capacity, and we continue to grow. This is still, we still have two months left before we'll stop filling classrooms. And so we've been really creative about thinking of other ways to serve kids' needs. So we might have children who come through the child find process who don't qualify for a full developmental preschool model. So what do we do to also provide them some support? So we've been working with our eval team, preschool evaluation team this year on looking at other ways to, to provide preschool-like experiences to children. Another area that we've been really focusing on is improving the systems within our preschool programs. We've had some change in staff in the last few years, and so we've been able to really dig in and say, what are the things that we're doing as a system to align with everything else in the system? Preschool tends to sort of sit out here on its own, and we're not part of the K-12 system, but how do we find ways to make sure that we have through lines and that we're aligned with all the other special education systems in that way? One thing I'm really excited about this year is that our, both our E-CAP program and our preschool program are using the same assessment tool that our kindergarten teachers use when they walk in the door for WaK kids. So there will be some really great opportunities to look at data across our system. Our preschool teachers can share that data with their future kindergarten teachers. They'll be talking the same language. I'm really excited about that work. This is the first full year of implementation, and the previous year was a pilot, so we didn't have full data, but we were able to kind of, we have some plans for how we're going to share that information. We're really looking at how do we improve the transitional systems. There's a big gap between what happens in a preschool setting and those first few weeks of kindergarten. So we're looking at what are, what are the things we need to do to improve our jumpstart program and make that more robust, more options for, for kids and families, looking at some support systems differently once they hit kindergarten. So those are kind of the systems-level things we're looking on, looking at, and we can still see, no matter, over the past few years, our data still looks fairly strong in math compared to the state, really strong in literacy, blowing out the water in literacy when, in WaK kids, but there's still continued need for social emotional development. We have some thoughts on why that might be, but that's an area that we'll be continuing to talk about. The third thing is that we continue to develop connections between our community and our programs, within our programs and as well as our outside community preschools. We have 220-some children in our system, and we have over 500, and so kindergartners. So we know there are kids out there in the community that are being served by other programs, that we need to continue to build those relationships with the Peninsula Learning Coalition and foster those opportunities. I think focusing on social emotional is a good opportunity for us to think about going forward. The second program I'll talk about on behalf of Sonia Nicholson, who's our coordinator in EL, the, our growth in our English learner program, our numbers has been, grown considerably. A note that I think is really important to think about is when I arrived here five years ago, we had 72 identified EL students, and that number, we've grown that much just this year. So I think that our needs are growing faster than our supports have been in place, and we're talking about systems-level supports a little later on that will also support our EL students. We have some really concerning numbers about our high school students and the risk of not graduating on time, and our EL grad rate is lower than we, we should be accepting, and so we need to think about how we rethink our supports. Sonia's done a great job of working with teachers and finding the alternative ways to connect with kids and provide different ways to find credits, but it's still just systemically a problem, and we need to work through that and find continued supports. However, I think a really big celebration is that a lot of, 10 of those students are the ones that graduated with a World Language credit this year, and seven out of 10 of them received the seal of biliteracy, and that's a, that's a win. There's some great things to be said about kids being biliterate and having the honor of having that and saying, this is a value-added experience to a student, and so we want to continue to focus on that as a celebration.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah. Yeah.
On your, your EL learners for high school graduation on time, although that may not be ideal for our high school graduates, the fact that they're trying to learn a new language while they're going to high school obviously makes it more challenging, but where are they at, if you were to ask about their five-year graduation? Are they graduating after five years, at least getting their diploma?
Oftentimes they, they don't stick around, but we do have some data on how much. I don't have the actual numbers, but they are continuing to stick around and get those credits. I'll have to get those numbers to you on the actual number.
But when are these students entering our system?
All throughout, yes. Some of them might be seniors, some of them might be ninth graders, some of them might be, if they're in ninth grade, they should be in that data.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is out of the 29 that are at risk, did we have them earlier? Did they come to our middle schools?
And I don't have all of that data for you right now, but we can certainly get you more in-depth data later. And there are two areas that I want to talk about with our Title LAP program. In our learning assistance program this year, we've really focused on, in addition to having our LAP teachers at every elementary school focusing on interventions and reading, we have been doing the third year of our early literacy studio model where Kelly Pruitt and I have been visiting with first and second grade teachers to really talk about what is good reading instruction look like in K-1 and 2. Kindergarten isn't involved this year because they've had two years, but first and second grade teachers, it's been really exciting to think about, you know, getting teachers to see good instruction in action. We spend the morning together learning, and then the afternoon together planning lessons and teaching in front of each other, so that's been really exciting. And then the second area that we've been using LAP funds to focus on, high-quality instruction is we have, Jessica Rosendahl is a Level Four Project GLAD trainer, and GLAD is, I'm going to read it because I don't want to mess up the language. It is a standards-based English language development instructional model that promotes high levels of academic language for, and achievement for students of all levels of English proficiency. So it's really designed to have, embed lots of instructional practices that focus on academic language and building that language development through science and literacy and social studies, and giving kids lots of opportunities to engage in that content area in a safe and meaningful way. And so Jessica's been a really phenomenal support. There are very few Level Four GLAD trainers out there, and we have one right here in our district, and so she's been leading that, and Sonia's been working with her on that this year. The beauty of that is that it supports our EL students, but it also is good instruction, and it'll benefit everybody. So that's been exciting. The second thing that I wanted to mention was that we've been able to think differently about how we used our Title I funds in a couple places this year. The ESSA languages allowed us for a little bit of more robust look at how you serve, use those funds, and Evergreen was one great model that in the past they've used their Title I funds to just fund paraeducators to do reading interventions, which is also a great model, and we've got that in lots of places. But Hugh and I were talking this spring and said, last spring, and said, what is it that you want to do? And there are a lot of teachers working on project-based learning and integration, and so he hired, using his Title I funds, a, a staff member who is just working with teachers all the time on how do you take a lesson or a unit and build in literacy, math, science, social studies, all of the pieces, and do a project-based approach? And so they've been really excited about how that's coming off in their building and letting teachers to get really familiar with how do you, how do you look at learning in a more integrated approach? So that's been exciting. And the other thing we've been able to do this year is provide at both KPMS and the high schools, a success coach, which is a person who is really focused on ensuring that kids who are, let's say, having a hard time in class, having some behavior challenges and end up having to leave class or go to the office, that person intervenes immediately and says, okay, what do we need to do to, to help you calm down, find a plan, make a plan, make amends, you know, with whoever you might have wronged, and figure out how to get back into class quickly so that you're learning, reducing loss of learning time, so.
These success, success?
Yeah.
Success coaches are at KPMS, Peninsia High School and Cooper High School.
And Henderson Bay, but very little time there.
And they're newer?
This year.
This year, okay.
That they're part of the counseling staff?
No.
They're separate?
Yes.
Okay, so this next slide reflects an annual survey that our lead nurse, Miriam Atchison, provides, and this is a survey that we fill out for OSPI every year. And we have a great group of school nurses in the school district that, you know, do a huge number of things at our 15 schools, and if you look at this data, this shows the, the health conditions that are reported annually, and health conditions can range from anything from diabetes to ADHD to mental health issues to asthma. Covers a wide range of health and medical conditions. That's showing you trend data over the last three years, I should say. So you can see that the trend of overall health conditions has been going up since 2017 substantially. That number at the top there, 2,792, is not, we didn't pick a great color there, but as you can see, that's risen over the past three years. And of those health conditions, of those 2,792 health conditions, in 2018, 355 of those are considered life-threatening. 527 of those we have healthcare plans for, and 125 of those we have 504 plans, which are just a little more in-depth plans for those students who need more significant accommodations for their health conditions. So just some interesting data in, in respect to the number of health conditions that, that are on the rise in the school district over the past three years. This next slide, switching to special education, shows our, this pulls out preschool, so it's our kindergarten through 21, so the students that we have in the system that are in our community transition program through the age of 21 are included here. And this is showing you data from the 2015-16 school year through the current school year, 2018-19. And as you can see, this is kind of, we've been on the rise with our special education population also over the past four years. That current data is from the March 2019 count of 12.33%. I'd anticipate that will end above where we were at last year. There's a lot of, this is the time of year where there's a lot of initial evaluations that are in place and students are being identified and placed in, placed in special education currently. So this is a trend we've been seeing. In addition to our growing preschool population, we've been seeing our K through 21 population increase too. Not, not significantly, but it is creeping up. We currently, that equals 1,125 students in the district that have IEPs K through 21.
John, how much of that growth do you consider being just growth of more kids or more identification of current kids?
It's a good question. I, I think we, I'd attribute some of it to some of the increasing social emotional behavioral needs we've seen at the elementary level, and I'd attribute some of it, we're going to talk in a little bit about systems of prevention and intervention. I think we've done a great job in many respects at some of our schools over the last several years of looking at structures like RTI and providing some, some pre-referral intervention. We haven't been systemic in that, so we do have little bubbles of higher identification where maybe we don't have as strong a system. So I think there is sometimes a tendency to quickly evaluate, identify and place to special education rather than go through a more robust intervention process.
Let's go, quick question. When did we start the restorative justice piece in our district? Oh, sorry, was that your question? Oh, when did we start the restorative justice?
That's a relatively new.
2017, November.
The past school year, I'd say within the past two, I'm looking at Dan.
Gradual transition. It's a gradual transition. I think restorative justice was a term that was thrown out frequently because it was in a lot of literature and received a lot of publicity. I like to use the phrase sometimes, we think we're doing things because we use the phrase. Really, it's a significant shift, it's a significant shift for our teachers and staff to understand that we're responding differently. It's even more so a significant shift, I think, for parents to understand, and usually it's not the parents of the offender, but if we have a student who's in a student, it's really a significant shift for a parent of someone that's a victim. So we, we've talked about it, we've worked the principles on it, and we've said, go slow, dabble, communicate, and we're going to continue to build on good knowledge, and we're going to have to continue. going to have to continue to grow on how we can do other things.
And the idea behind the success coach, right? I know it's challenging, is really grounded in that idea that we want kids to be able to work through these challenges rather than just leave and go home or misspend the day in the office. We want them back in class.
Right.
And the underlying belief is that we do what is needed to make amends and get back to the business of learning instead of letting it distract you, distract us from what is going on.
And if I might just have a teach other options on how to deal with situations, teach replacement behaviors.
Yes.
As opposed to, "You made a mistake, here's your consequence, you're punished, you're going to learn from that." Data shows that you can learn from that. So to teach replacement behaviors and amends, it's the bigger picture of peace.
And we are taking data on how successful this model is as well.
Well, and the reason why I asked, maybe I just didn't hear you correctly, John, that when we talk about how we identify kids in special ed, particularly around behavior, I'm just wondering if there's any sort of, you know, overlap as we learn and through the process? Because I know, that's why, I mean, I knew it was new, but I wasn't sure where we were.
Yeah, and I think we've had more of an emphasis on restorative justice at the secondary schools, and that's some of the work that our success coaches are doing. I said it correctly? Lucky. That is some of the work they've been engaged with, and at the elementary level, we have been implementing some positive behavior supports for kids and trying to, again, teach them those appropriate replacement behaviors, but that's something we're collecting data on and hope to become more systematized in.
It's almost kind of like a pre-restorative justice at elementary offices, like, for example, you have a conflict on the playground, instead of kicking the kid off the playground, you have the kid reflect, go apologize, you know, that's a small step you must take.
I didn't mean to take us off the path. I was just wondering if there's any sort of correlation to how we identify.
Good question. So this next slide talks about our current and future work. So this school year, we were fortunate enough to be able to kind of reconfigure our options programs. They had historically been a K-5 configuration, and we had them placed at four elementary schools, so we were able to collapse the program and options. For those of you who don't know, are life skills programs at the elementary level and the middle school level. So at elementary level, we were able to collapse a program at Artendale, and we have programs now at three elementary schools, but we added teachers to be able to make them primary and intermediate configurations. So instead of having K-5, we have K-2 or K-3 and then 4-5, so more appropriately developmental and academic and social-emotional levels for students and teachers. A big focus of our training this year, when we've had the opportunity to get in front of staff, whether it's BPD days or Peninsula Learns, PSD Learns, is social-emotional learning training. So we've done that with our staff in a number of different forums. We've had presenters come in from outside of the district, from the University of Washington. We've got some great staff of our own that have done some great presentations and training in the areas of executive functioning and social-emotional behavioral learning. So that is an ongoing focus and will continue to be, and that's at the request of staff who have been asking for more tools in those areas. And aligned with that is our behavior team, so we're fortunate this year to have hired a behavior specialist, Dennis Brennan. And Denny is, has the task of working at all 15 of our schools, and actually preschool too. He gets out to the preschool, and he's paired with two paraeducators, behavior intervention specialist support team, and they go out and, you know, we've had a number, over 50 consultations, and, you know, they've done over 20 trainings, and they get out and work with staff, paraeducators, teachers, they help design behavior plans for students, help implement those plans, and do some coaching with staff in buildings to try to change the course of outcomes for students who are struggling and experiencing some of those, you know, significant behavior and social-emotional issues at school. So that's a program that we hope to grow and further define. We added the paraeducators in January to the team, and we hope to, you know, look at our data at the end of the year, see where we've been effective, and hopefully implement change and continue to grow the program, but it's been a great addition to the district. We entered into a TRAC program review. TRAC is our behavior program, and we have the program housed at Purdy Elementary and Mentor Creek at the elementary level, at Harbor Ridge at the middle school level, and at Peninsula High School at the high school level. So we had some experts in the area of behavior programming come in in September and October, and they met with our staff, they observed, went through a pretty rigorous program review, and just recently issued us a report that kind of said, "Here's some things that you're doing, some great things for kids, and here are some things that we'd recommend in terms of additional supports and program reconfiguration, basically, that would help support students more effectively," and some things that they recommended from a district perspective, too, that we could do to help support our programs and students out in buildings. So those are things that we'd be looking to implement in the 19-20 school year. We are also going to be going through an ESD program review here in May. We have some people from the ESD coming in to look at our special education programs, mostly resource rooms, K-12, and look at how we're providing services to students and what does our continuum look like? Again, what are some things that we're doing that are really positive, and then maybe some suggestions for things that we could continue to improve on and provide a more robust continuum for our students and resource room setting.
Is that a regular review, or is that something you guys initiated to bring in?
It's something we initiated to bring in. Yeah, and then in terms of our department and student services, we've had the opportunity to talk a little bit with Dr. Jarvis about our structure, and we've had a couple positions that have been unfilled this year. Our early childhood facilitator position, and more recently, our social worker position. So those are two positions that have been unfilled, so we've been talking with Dr. Jarvis in the cabinet about how we might fill those positions differently or, you know, looking at options in terms of how can we more effectively respond to buildings and staff and support schools and teams and staff out there? Is there something different we could do with those positions, basically? Is the question we're asking, going through that process now of making those determinations? So, big question, how do we improve outcomes for all students? And I'll just preface this slide by saying, again, I think there's some great things going on in this district for kids every day. We were fortunate to have a great and talented staff and, you know, amazing families and amazing community, but I think from some of the data we looked at with the Healthy Youth Survey and some of our other data, there's definitely work to be done. And here's a few of the things that, you know, we've discussed and alluded to, that social-emotional behavioral piece. K-12, we see that in our incoming preschool students and the kindergarten, and we see it across our system in terms of, there are significant needs there that, in a more systemic way, we'd like to be able to address those and in a more preventative way also. Student achievement, we have interventions in place for students, and we'll talk a little bit more about tiered interventions here in a moment, but how can we more effectively move students that are in our Tier 3 intensive interventions out of those interventions, so back into Tier 2 or into the core? We, as a system, from a systems perspective, aren't doing a great job of that. We often start the year with the same, or end the year with the same number of students in a Tier 3 intervention as we start the year. So there's work to be done there. As we discussed, we have an increasing EL population, increasing special education population, and then in terms of our graduation rates, some discrepancies between our all-students groups and our EL population, our special ed population, and other subgroups, too. So I think that, you know, there's some good data out there, and in many areas, we are average with the state or right around where the state is, but I think, you know, the question is, are we satisfied with that? Is that good enough? And if we lose one student from the system, is that acceptable? And I think we, all as educators, like to be, you know, far superior to the state. There are discrepancies in our data. We do have, you know, not to the point that arises to disproportionality as the state would define it, but we do have discrepancies in our subgroups, and how do we create greater equity in our system for all kids? And we've talked a lot this year about one of the ways in which we might do that is approaching things, you know, with much more of a systems perspective. So looking at multi-tiered systems of supports. This is a system that incorporates some of the things we've done before, just more holistically. So when you think of RTI, you think of PBIS or some of these other initiatives that we've implemented to some degree in the district. This is kind of an overarching umbrella of all those things. So multi-tiered systems is, it's really a delivery framework that addresses both preventative, problem-solving, addresses both the academic and non-academic interventions and supports that are, that should be, that we'd like to see available school-wide, district-wide for all kids.
Would you mind just quickly explaining what PBIS is?
Oh, sorry, a lot of acronyms. PBIS is Positive Behavior Intervention Supports. So kind of another, again, if you think of multi-tiered systems, we've got the academic interventions on one side, then the social-emotional behavioral, Positive Behavior Supports on the other. So really, we're talking about addressing reading, writing, math in a preventative measure, addressing social-emotional behavioral skills in a preventative measure, and really supporting all of those social, psychological, emotional, and academic needs that kids have, and providing equal opportunity for success at school for all kids. And having a system, a robust system like this, that is a district-wide system, is one way in which we can do that. And I'll just say, too, that, you know, this provides supports for kids that need remedial services, but on the other side of that, options for kids that require enrichment and a broader, a broader pathway and options for those students, too. So it's not a narrow band, it's kind of the system-wide supports all the way from remediation to enrichment. And this is kind of a way to visualize it. We often think of MTSS as a pyramid of interventions, so when you look at the green, that's kind of the big area where that's Tier 1, that's core, that's all students. So we have a real, you know, the goal is to have a real robust core in Tier 1 that meets the needs of most kids. And then that's, again, both behavioral, both academic, career and technical at the secondary level, and really getting kids ready for a career, college, and life. For some kids, some students who don't respond and aren't, you know, their needs aren't met in that Tier 1, we have Tier 2 supports, and those Tier 2 supports supplement the core, so they're in addition to. So if a student needs extra support in reading, we have a reading curriculum and intervention that we can place that student, and if it's additional supports and social-emotional behavioral, we have a behavioral intervention that we can place that student in, in Tier 2. And for a much smaller number, up at the top of the pyramid, we have Tier 3 interventions, and those are more specialized, more individualized, and they're for those students that really need something different. That could be special education, it's not always special education. We have students that have those Tier 3 needs that aren't necessarily disabled, aren't necessarily eligible for special education, but they do have a need for a more intensive intervention. And this is just kind of, you know, some additional information to summarize. It's, MTSS is really about pathways, so we want reading pathways for students, we want math pathways, we want social-emotional behavioral pathways, and it's, you know, again, preventative. So we've kind of laid out the system and identified those things that we think are high-leverage practices and effective interventions, and it's not, it's not a wait-to-fail model where we say, you know, "We're going to keep collecting data, collecting data, and eventually maybe you'll be eligible for special education," but we have interventions that are designed really proactively to place students in. So really robust Tier 1, and then research-based and highly effective Tier 2 and Tier 3 interventions. Part of the intent of MTSS is to support transitions, so whether it's transition from grade to grade, transition from school to school, transition from, you know, preschool to kindergarten. Fifth to sixth grade, eighth to ninth grade. Those transitions are a big deal, and supporting that and helping kids and families navigate that is part of those pathways that I mentioned before. And it's also a big piece of it, is increasing that school home connection and engagement of families and community, and also linked to what we were talking about or hearing about a little bit with the Healthy Youth Survey, facilitating that family access to both interventions within the school district and outside of the school district for those students that need that higher level of support. So that's our last slide. We were trying to be brief in 15 minutes. I don't know how we did, but questions?
Any questions?
The 250 EL students that we have, that's across the district, right? That is not just secondary?
There's definitely some target areas that have higher populations in the Discovery, Purdy, Harbor Heights area, a little bit more on the KP than we've had in the past, and that population continues to grow, but...
And the number of kids that are at risk are not graduating on time, can you give an average of how deficient they are in, with credits?
I cannot, but Sonia is here anymore, but we can certainly get you that data.
Dr. Jarvis, do you have anything else to add?
The part I would add is that John Yellilies and I have talked about this in some detail, but the part I'd like to emphasize at this particular time would be, I've asked him to be the face for the District of Multi-Tier Support Systems. And as we work with Melissa Wisner and what I would call the core of learning and what the basic system is all about, to recognize that there's an entire orbit of kids who, whether it's evidence in the Healthy Youth Survey, whether it's academic evidence, whether it's dropouts, whether it's why do kids end up in other places that don't seem to work in the gen, in world, John has agreed to take that on and be really the system and coordinate that system and move it. So that'll show up in places that range across the, really across the school system. It's not just special education and general education, but there's an entire spectrum in between of how do we provide programs and services and support for staff, but mostly thinking of it in terms of our young people, and whether that's our birth to 2 or whether it is our age 21. But as we would look at Henderson Bay, which has come up for conversation in terms of what the program is or who it serves, to be able to define that across the system of, "This is how we're taking care of kids who can benefit from some online," or "Here's how we serve some kids who are severely credit deficient," whatever that age and whatever that need, to be able to say that we're choosing our priorities, we're working on developing, it's not going to happen all at once, but here's an effort that is absolutely one of our major threads for the Peninsula School System, and here's the way we're starting to, at this point, to coordinate some of the pieces that have been, we have been taking on in a variety of ways that you've heard about this evening and for a number of years, but really address that in a comprehensive system fashion. So we won't change John's last name to MTSS, but he has very much volunteered and agreed to take on that role and carry that as part of his professional duties. So I'm really very pleased to share that and say that I think John is an outstanding person to really take that on and say, "How do we continue to develop the support for kids wherever they may be on that continuum, but we have multiple tiers? No magic, but we have a great staff, we have multiple tiers, and we can do it intentionally, and we get better and better and better." So with that, I'd say thank you to John for updating us tonight, but also to take on what he's taking on. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
John and Lisa, thank you very much for the overview and then look at things to come, so thank you. Were there any other questions? David?
No, I'm good. Thank you, John. You did a good job.
Thank you, guys, both. All right, we will move on to school of choice review and discussion. Dr. Jarvis will be leading a review and discussion on the school of choice.
I would note, really, an emphasis tonight of three things, most of which you've heard before, but we will be approaching April 25th, asking the board for making a decision. So I'd like to do three things, one of which is to talk about magnet schools. On the very first page of what's in this document is not just semantics, but replacing the, what we've been talking about as a choice school with a magnet school. And for a variety of reasons that I can certainly go into in this document, which will be online and available to people, to better represent what we're trying to do. The central issue that I would emphasize tonight is that as we've added School 9 and School 10, our effort is to deal with the overcrowding and the lack of classrooms. So as we've added the new school number 9 and number 10, we've also added classrooms at Artendale, we've also added classrooms at Evergreen. So when we build the new Evergreen, it will be larger. When we build the new Artendale, it will be larger. But 9 and 10 will be our two largest schools in the system, and Artendale will match that, so that... that, so they'll be our three largest. The reason I talk about that in terms of the magnet approach is that when you look at the numbers, they're pretty impressive. We're about to house more than a thousand kids in new schools. And the question is, one of those will open in 2020, and the other three will open in 2021, but how do we make that work? How do we make it work within our school system and do it with as smoothly as possible and recognizing we're still housing a lot of new kids and moving kids? So, I start with just the number nine is probably the most traditional to explain. We have a very high-density community that has developed in that particular location, and we're putting a new school right in, almost in the midst of that location. It will be the closest that we have to a walking school. It will serve that neighborhood. That neighborhood is served in other ways right now, and that has three of our most crowded schools, Purdy, Discovery, and Harbor Heights. So as you look at the geography, and I'm going to get to the maps in just a second, those are massively overcrowded. If you add another 200 students next year and another 200 students the year after, which is the rate which we're expanding, you can see that we're not only in trouble now, but in deeper trouble. So I mentioned the school number nine because number nine will be redrawing the boundaries, and redrawing the boundary for that neighborhood school, and taking the load partially off those three districts that are really now supporting that. But then comes the entire magnitude, and what I'm going to do is to move to a map, and Brooke, if you'll advance to the map that says, these are the present boundaries. Not for any particular detail as much as a graphic of what a magnet school is all about. The present boundaries shown in the different colors, you can identify your favorite elementary school and look at the way that the boundaries have been drawn to try to accommodate growth and neighborhoods and distance to schools. This is a very, what I would call, traditional approach to try to serve kids in their neighborhood with a minimum of transportation, with a maximum of parental involvement and activity, and say, this is the district as it exists with eight schools. And then I want to go to the next one, which is with school number nine. This is not current, it's not accurate, it's what was drawn up a year ago in anticipation of adding one school, and some ways that we might go. So I want to call your attention to the light green that suddenly appeared. And if you looked at those two maps side by side, you would see that here was the way of carving out a new area that would serve school number nine. Here's the way that we would take some from the blue Purdy area, and we would take some from the red Discovery area, we would take some from the pink area, which was Harbor Heights. And now we have a new attendance area, and it eased the overcrowding in our most crowded schools. The reality is, the next challenge, the bubble that's kind of right in the, there are two overlapping bubbles. One of those is Discovery, and the other is now school number 10. School number 10 up there does not have an attendance boundary, and I use it mainly for emphasis, not as an effort tonight to put you into rebounding. But as you have carved out the new boundary for number nine, and as you look at this, regardless of where you put number 10, if I showed to you the map that had all the bubbles representing all the children in elementary school, you would see that heavily, heavily laden area in basically all of the Gig Harbor area, because that's the growth management area, that's the most overcrowded. And the point I'm trying to make here is that unlike what we did with number nine, where we had an area we could carve out, and we could hit, we could really reduce the overcrowding, the next step is to get another 550 students and not overlap your attendance boundaries. The only way you can do that is to start to, in essence, replace. You'll take a lot of kids out of a current school, put them in number 10, and then you'll start carving out a new area for the school that was just vacated, and a third one if necessary, and a fourth one if necessary. And the point being that where we are in terms of the growth, where we are in terms of the density, the saturation, where we are in terms of the required rules for citing schools right now, is it became the effort of how do we grow into another school of another 550 students? Just as a quick aside, each of our new schools is equipped for 600 students, 30 classrooms and 600 students. We're not planning on starting at 600, so just, I'm using the 550 as a placeholder. But as we try to do that, the design then was to use one as a boundary and use the other as a magnet that would attract students. It allowed someone in a family to say, we're perfectly happy in that yellow area in Voyager, and we have no intention of going anywhere, and we just assume you not tell us that you've reboundried and told my child they must go to a different school. The reality of that one is, the other way of doing business is to create a magnet school that would say, that would be a theme, that would be an attraction for my student, that would be something we would enjoy as a family, and we're willing to go there. So the second half of handling this growth really allows us as a system to say, there are some very good things we could look at, and you heard the suggestions, and John Helwic has highlighted that of, in my writings to you, that they might be dual-language schools, they might be science and technology schools, they might be schools of the arts, they might be a lot of focus areas in which we can say, this is a theme that we're operating in this school, we're doing a different way of instruction and units or project-based. But because it's different, because it's not non-traditional, it invites you to say, does this match to your child or your family? What we have seen, whether you're on the east side of Lake Washington, or whether you're in the heart of a district that's much more diverse, is that those are magnets that draw parents and draw students, and they're quite effective in doing that. They also tend to draw some teachers who would like to teach that way or in that area. And I start with that, something you've been hearing now really for weeks, as we've talked about a school of choice, and now I'm calling the magnet school, is that it starts and ends with the success of providing a good education for kids. It is not elite, it is non-traditional. I highlight in one of my notes that we were not helped by the newspaper releasing that this was a school for 160 students, because it tended to add to that element that it must be a very small, elite program, and you must test to get into it. I'm going to quote Dr. Harvey, who came in from Renton to talk to our principals, as she was sharing the story of the parent that said, "I have to get my child in that good school," the one with all the high performing and all the high test scores. And she said, "I have to tell you, sir, we have no children in that school, we're just starting a school." Any and all of us would say, the school number 10 is designed to be a school. It is school for all children. You don't test into it, you don't qualify, it's not elite. If we have too many students applying for it, we solve that through a lottery process, but it is intended to serve all children, is intended to serve all levels, and it's simply a, and be an opportunity for you to choose that, and while you can still choose to stay in your, in your school. Enter then the third part of the equation, which is, how do you handle the geography? And in this case, the new school and where that bubble is, is basically dead center in our heaviest population growth area. So it is the perfect place, but it's not a perfect place to try the boundary. It is a perfect place to draw, in a magnet sense, people who would come from the blue area, the purple area, the yellow area. As Karen Anderson, I was complimenting her earlier for being recognized to be prudent, Karen is also, I've learned, very, very practical. And when we talked about transportation for the kids who would be further out in that lower brown area where Evergreen is on the far left, that's, without a helicopter, that's a pretty good run to get from there to the magnet school. And yes, Karen's response was, we will provide transportation, we will figure it out. In answer to someone's question, what about special education, if there was a special education student? John Yellily's answer is, we would provide service, the way we do at any school. It's not a special school that doesn't allow certain kids or isn't equipped, it's a school that serves the full range of young people and families. So, conceptually, what I'm asking the board and what I'm recommending and providing to you is, the work that has been done till this time, but a recommendation that on the 25th of April, I would ask you to approve a magnet school concept for school number 10. Earlier, you were asked to approve the construction of number 10 and the timeline for opening number 10 in 2020. You knew at that point that part of the issue was, if we didn't get it open by 2020, we had another 10 classrooms that we were short in, and basically that was in the blue and the pink and the red areas, but really throughout the system. So, I'm asking the board to take the step of approving the magnet school and allowing us to go ahead. We have a timeline that's been put in front of you, we're hiring the planning principal. And I'm going to add to that, the line item of the planning principal to this spring to come back to the board and to all of us with the additional work that's been done on what should that theme be for the school. But it's a separate issue from needing to use this solution to deal with our overcrowding and being able to move ahead. So we would plan the timeline that was presented to you, to move ahead on the naming, to move ahead on the planning principle, to move ahead with the concept of transportation and services and support. But really, to work towards then, the final piece in that puzzle would be, what would be that focus, what would be the theme, and can we add any additional answers to the, and clarity to how that would work? I recognize that that's a concept, and you're approving a concept, but I do want to go back, and why I did this tonight was to re-identify the problem we're trying to solve. I would hope that we can demonstrate to people that the two basic solutions to our problem, A, to reboundry for all schools, is more than difficult, it is very disruptive to a whole lot of families. I do believe that family, and I was talking with someone earlier today who said, people who pass the bond issue and approving two new schools recognize that there will be new boundaries. I couldn't agree more. That's part of it. But I think there are other families in our eight current schools that would be very perfectly happy to stay where they are and not be moved because we're solving our problem that really disrupts their family. So I think the combination of the two not only works to solve the original problem, I think it works to add a magnet, add a theme for those parents and those kids for whom that's the right one. We won't ask parents to volunteer until we can identify what that theme is, so they'll know what's ahead for them at that point. The parent timing and selection of students really is in the next spring, but by that time, we want to be well into, if not all, fully resolved in the staffing of that school, and the staff participating in the work and the development of the learning and the curriculum and the theme that will take place in that school. So, we're into that world, that we've been working at this, and in some ways, it seems like a long time, and yet it's, I recognize it's, we're 60 days since the passage of the bond issue. There's an amazing amount of work that has been done. I am, I'm just amazed at how well the community has supported and responded and the staff, and whether it's the Moody's report, and having already been reauthorized in that process, whether it is the hiring of the architects, whether it's the hiring of the land surveyors. You've heard the report that they're in every site, in every school, almost every day, and those curious little things of stakes showing up with flags on them, including the one we're out on 144th, that's going to be fun to work with. There's been a tremendous amount of work done this spring, and we're trying to take this one step by step, because we recognize that it is different. But I'm hoping that, A, the magnet school will more aptly describe what we're trying to do, and B, the focus on solving the overcrowding really is reestablished as the major thing that we're trying to do, and C, recognize that ours is a blended solution that really, we believe, would offer some of the best choices for our kids and our staff, and do it intelligently. I would say, in your idle moments, if you keep looking at this map and say, as I said, the green area for number nine would have to be adjusted, because right now, that area has grown even more, and now would overrepresent, so we'd have to cut that one back. But the reality of trying to carve out another color in the midst of that has to touch families that I would estimate at least 750 families, if not more, to try to achieve some kind of balance in those elementary schools. So that's really my update of April 11th. It's a lead-in to April 25th, and certainly an invitation for questions or over the next couple of days as soon as possible, if you have additional information. We're not out there looking for research that says this is the best school, or the best, the best possible presentation. We're trying to create a very fine school that's equal to all the rest of them, that all of our schools are very fine schools. So we're not trying to do something that says, this only serves gifted children, or this only serves children who are ultra-talented in this area. This is to serve kids, and I think of, I described to you once, working with a school that was called the Magic String School. Every child in that school had a stringed instrument, some of the tiniest violins I've ever seen in the hands of five-year-olds. But every child, and some liked that really big thing, and wanted that big cello, and it was not intended to make brilliant classical musicians out of an entire school of students. It was deeply, deeply appreciated by the kids and the parents that were there, and the community was beautiful in terms of supporting, how would the district provide that many string instruments? So I use that as an example, not, David, to try to prove that it should be an art school.[1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45][1798.45] The, the reality is that it, the theme will come out of some of the pragmatic pieces. We'll try to make sure we've gone through even more process to figure out what, what the parents would most like and the staff would, would feel best about supporting. But first is that choice of, is a magnet school the, the best answer? I recommend it unconditionally as a better alternative than, than trying to displace a whole lot of kids and families. But I also recognize that if that is, in your judgment as a board, the better alternative, that, that the magnet school is not what you would prefer at this point, then we will, we will make it work and come back to you with all the, the designs and find another color and, and a space that, that makes sense as best we can do it. And we will set forth with the community to make it work.
Thank you very much for that overview and kind of taking a step back and the thinking behind where your recommendation. So thank you. So the next meeting, the 25th, you'll be coming back, asking the board for voting and approval of either moving forward with the magnet school or not?
Correct.
Is that correct? And just that and not the theme?
Correct.
Okay, fantastic. I really-
Can I, can I ask a question?
Yeah, we're going to do questions in a second. I just, I, I appreciate the breaking of those two things because I do think it's two different issues. It's solving and overcrowding and how we do with that. And then what best serves our school as a magnet. So with that, questions, discussion? David, you want to start?
Yeah, I just, I, I just already have my mind made up and I'm just wondering, is it possible that the board could make a decision tonight on whether it's a magnet school? And then on the 25th, the theme? I just, I, I find it hard to believe that at this point, the board would not be able to make that decision on whether it's a magnet school or a non-magnet school. And then the theme, we could come up with, we'd have two more weeks.
The short answer is, is no. We did not, we did not advertise this as a, as an action item. And I think that would, that would be something that would not be good. It, it's technically probably possible for the board to do that because you are in a meeting and you can take action.
And yeah, David, we clarified with Dr. Jarvis earlier that making this decision on the 25th is not going to hold up anything. So making it tonight would not, yeah.
All right. I would just say, I appreciate the work. I'd appreciate the information that the school district has provided us so far and that's based on what you, I've received from the school district. I have no further questions. You've provided me enough information to move forward on the 25th.
Thanks, David. Lori?
Yep.
We, yeah, I was wanting, thank you very much for, for, I, I think what, just clarifying what we've discussed many times, but has been lost in translation somehow, I think at times. But can you just clarify the timing, just because you mentioned this briefly, just for people who are listening, clarify the timing on hiring the principal before the theme is chosen and what's the advantage to doing that? You know, how that can work? I've heard you say it before, but could you say it again?
Yeah, I think it, it really will help maybe a lot of people. We, we don't need necessarily the, the specialist principal. We need a very fine school principal and a very fine staff and, and will develop the, the theme. So we are able to advertise and hire for a principals. Certainly we'll be looking for traits that would be, can this principal do all the things that would be in front of us as we create a magnet school, as we go through the process of working with staff and parents and, and selection. But it doesn't need to be a specialist and, and the, the reality of, of that one is we have interest in our current administration. We have interest from outsiders. We've already advertised the position on the timeline that was shared with you before. If for any reason we found that our pool was inadequate to really deal with the issue of a magnet school, then we'll simply go out and, and find the right people that, that are. But it really frees us right now to bring in that planning principal. The second piece is that, that planning principal, I, I'm going to refer back to some visioning nights we did in January where some staff had gone out to visit some of the brand-new schools that just opened. Pretty universal was the, the, the statement of the principals. If they had been brought in when the school was being designed, they would have really liked that opportunity because they could have solved some of the problems. So coming in after it was designed and being, already being built and mostly finished really didn't help them much as a planning principal. Functionally, it gave them a little running start, but it didn't help in terms of the, this. So we, we're bringing the principal in at the stage where it's, I think, the most critical of all. What, what's the dream? What's the, what are the pieces that are necessary? How do we organize our, our community, our staff? And I'm over answering, but really for, I think, a lot of people out there, why are we doing it now? And should it be a, if it was a STEM school or a STEAM school, should it be a mad scientist? The, the answer, I'm teasing, but no, it does not have to be a, a, a science investigator to really operate that school. In fact, very few of the, the schools, the magnet schools would have that, that specialty.
I was going to say, so the principal doesn't necessarily need to be a, know how to play the viola to, to-
They just, they just need to be the best principal we can find on the face of the earth.
Okay, thank you.
Leslie?
Um, my understanding at a previous meeting that there was going to be some sort of feedback process for parents and staff. It's a little bit concerning to me that there was some misinformation out there that took hold. The fact that it got traction at all, it makes me wonder. And so, and that was early in, in March because I know that it was going to be from 314 to 414 where this process was going to happen. So I wanted to know what happened with that feedback loop and which staff, other than principals and building administrators, were involved in the conversation regarding the magnet school? I'm curious about the proportionality of what that's going to look like across the district, how we're going to pull to make sure that, you know, it's equitable. I think that there was other questions about resources. So, you know, magnet schools are great. I mean, there's some great examples of magnet schools throughout Washington State and other states. And so, but there can sometimes be a perception that that school is going to get more and better resources and how is that going to be addressed? Particularly if it's a STEAM school, right? Because we have science specialists in, in our elementary schools. And also the transportation is something that I appreciate that, you know, we've been working on, but I, I do have concerns about those kids on the key, depending on what type of school and who may want to go. But, you know, our geography is what it is. We can't, you know, build a ferry or anything like that or a helicopter to get them there.
I, I'm going to kind of work my way backwards through just two or three of those. I won't try to give them in detail, but one of the comments I would make is that a magnet school and, and what's used there, whether it's the pedagogy of the theme, is, is going to serve another purpose. And that's the purpose of, of some of our studio, call them studio classrooms of, this is a way where a teacher gets to do something in science that they haven't had time in the, the more traditional schools. So how does that work for us and how do we share it? But the point that I'm trying to make is that every school out, whether that's Vaughn or Evergreen or Minter Creek on the peninsula, really will have opportunities to develop things that they want to develop in their freedom. So my hope would be that whatever is best practice and we get better and better at offering more and more choices, i.e., just of how do we match up with students and learning styles and, and needs? And I- I would just say that one of the ways to, to answer that is our geography will always remain- Difficult to get from that brown area to the green area or what have you. So how do we open the door to staff members who are innovative and creative throughout the, the system? Secondly, is that while it is a half hour, we can set up, for example, the transportation piece that says, I can't do door-to-door, but I can do, I can set up hubs where parents can get to that hub as easily as a parent from the green area can get to, to number 10 and, and take the burden off the parent of having to do that transportation. We can provide a, a way of getting there. We're going to have to, we've been talking about things like starting times and, and which way do we make this work and how do we stagger some pieces? It's, it's a challenge to the system, but it's doable and it's doable with the, I think it's a part of your questions of all kids. If there's a child, if there's a parent- And they're in pink or green or yellow or purple, how do we make that accessible to them? I cannot erase the fact that they live further out, but I can erase the fact that they, that might mean they wouldn't have access to the, the school. Lastly, in terms of what we did- And I guess it's, it's a little bit of a, I don't know, a confession on my part. There's been a couple of weeks where we haven't quite figured out where we're going on this and, and which, I guess which brush fire and, and perception. So it's part of the reason that I'm saying to the board, I think I need a really clear go-ahead and, and then create- Time. The main item of the feedback, we certainly hope is what, what themes, what focus will best serve kids? The choice to do a magnet versus the boundary is really, in many ways, it's not that you don't listen to other people, but it, what solution is the board going to choose? And so not knowing if you wanted to go there and- Go deeper in with the parents. I'm not trying to make excuses as much as I think we need to clarify the two pieces and then have a, a good way of getting information back so that A, the decision on magnet is yours and hearing and knowing what you know. And then B, if we do go that way, that we now do everything possible to clarify with parents what, what's their preference, what's, how would it work? What would it look like? How, how would it function and, and ultimately, are they interested?
So we didn't have any of those feedback sessions?
We had over, what? We had over, like, 400 responses, but there are a whole lot of other-
Before that, I mean, that was, we did that in, in the initial part, which is what packed the boardroom that one night, right? And then after that or during that same meeting, there was a conversation, there was going to be more conversation, you know?
I, yes, and, but we also tried to, as you saw, I tried to back up the, the information that was gathered at that point and, and what happened really caused me to do what I did, which was to back up and try to say, how do we, how do we clarify these different parts and pieces so that they're not all tangled? You didn't have somebody who was angry at the prospect of something that was literally totally- Based on the wrong concept of what it was about. So, so I'm in- Trying to sort that out and not compound it worse. We, we have time, I think, to do it right. If the question is whether or not parents would prefer a magnet or a non-magnet approach, I, I'm respectfully going to say, well, we'll do our absolute best to keep explaining what it's about. That problem or the choice of solutions really is one of the, the board's and, and I guess my own recommendation to you of what I think is a pretty clear choice that I can't give away. I can't say to somebody else, can you make that decision for me? Or the 50, 51% is, is a better, a better answer. In this case, I think it has to be our, our best. So I'm not answering all the questions, but I'm trying to say that I think we can, I think we can do it very well.
Lori, did you have a clarification?
Yeah, I want, I think that I have the same concerns as you about, about the feedback and, but I want to clarify that because I'm thinking that most of the feedback that we felt like we didn't have or that people felt like they didn't give was regarding the theme. I want to, I want to see if we're on the same page. Was regarding the theme and the direction and the, you know, how it was going to work, a lot of questions that we have yet to address, like the staffing and all that. But do you, or do you think it was regarding simply whether the kids have a neighborhood school or whether they, even if it were a regular school without a theme? Are you thinking they shouldn't come from-
I think it was a, I'm thinking it was a missed opportunity to have a conversation of what a magnet school looks like, to get feedback from staff and, and particularly teachers to figure out and reassure them or to get ideas from them about how that equity was going to look throughout all of our elementary schools. And so one of the concerns that I was hearing was that, where are the resources going? Is this, and, and I think that's kind of what drove that and gave that conversation traction, that narrative traction about it being an elite school. And I think that, it was my understanding that there was going to be further conversation with the community to, within that time period, not only to clarify, but to get, sort of test the temperature of how they felt about it as well, but also an opportunity to clear up a lot of things.
I kind of, I, I feel a little bit what Lori's saying in that, you know, we had the packed house because I think of the timing. We were going to do the School of Choice in 2021 and, and that deciding a theme without getting input. So I think, I mean, now the packed house is gone because I think they see we are taking our time. I think those discussions that you're looking for are in the timeline going forward to help identify the theme. Is that correct?
Well, again, it wasn't about the theme. It was about, it was the, the, it's really more about resources. So in, and there's a perception that if you have a themed school, will that school then be, have more and better resources because it's a theme? Will there be other priorities? I think there's just some reassurances, which I think you touched on in your earlier explanation.
And again, I would just say-
Can I say something?
Just a second, Art responding to Leslie?
I would, I would just say that we need to make sure that perception is not there because this is not the, the rich school. It's not one we're pouring resources into. It's, we would be doing the same resources, the same staffing, whether this was a boundary school. School number nine is going to be the same resources as school number 10. Arten Dale is going to have the same resources. The only difference in resources would be classically, if we had a heavy Title I school with higher poverty, they would qualify for some federal funds that others don't. But our district, the entire setup, I think, of funding is one that's very even-handed in staffing and it, the, the smallest school, Evergreen, probably is the costliest per pupil because it, they simply absorb the cost, for example, of a principal and a counselor on fewer kids. But it's not because anybody favored that. It's just that we don't happen to have 600 kids out on Evergreen. We, we have 200 and whatever it is, 79. So that's the only difference in resources. The, the focus of saying this is a, whatever, a, a science technology versus dual language versus something else does not change the ratios. It doesn't change the resources. It doesn't give them more. What it really does is just match up kids and, and parents and, and that theme. So I will, I will do everything possible to get that word out. And I, I think, other than a little hiccup on 160 students, that we were actually gaining on the, the, the belief that this really is just a school. It happens to have a different pedagogy and a theme.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Sorry, David.
Well, actually, David, I'm going to let Marcia just say a few things first because she hasn't had a chance to speak yet.
Actually, I think it's been a pretty good conversation. There's a couple of things I would like to say. I so appreciate the use of the term magnet or thematic. I think it sends a different message to the whole district. And I, I think it clarifies a little bit that concept and helps people understand that it will, we're looking at a themed school. I think secondly, I, second, Leslie's question about proportionality and- I think, secondly, I, second, Leslie's question about proportionality, and it's not to answer tonight, but what I would like to do, could you add that to the presentation or background? I just, I don't know how to think about it, and we're going to be actually filling this school at the same time we're opening school number nine. And so it's a little mind scrambling when you think about it, so.
It's actually kind of fun to think about how
So I think those are my big issues. I'm hearing some of the, I think, same things in terms of feedback that Lori's hearing, that Leslie's hearing, and I want to be able to explain it to the best of my ability without managing the process, but knowing and understanding it. Now, I, you can make that happen next time?
I will do my, I will do my best.
Just help us understand how it might be done.
Understand.
Yeah, it's not cast in concrete, it's being able to explain it to our folks out there.
David, did you still have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I, you know, the majority of the feedback that I heard that, and still do, I think that packed the room, at least in my opinion, was the timing that we were going to open it up as a school of choice, themed school this year, and that there were teachers, like, how the heck were we going to staff that so rapidly in 2019 to be a school of choice? There were other parents that were angry that we were going to use Henderson Bay Bay and Co. mingle elementary kids with high school kids. And once we took that step back and heard those concerns, that's why I think we don't have a packed room, at least that's my opinion. And I think that a lot of thought has gone into this, and so I, I am not hearing the grumblings and the people approaching me in line at Fred Meyer or calling me with a blank phone screen. That's not happening anymore. And I think that's because of, and so to address Leslie's concern, I would think what you just said, and I agree with Art and the rest, is that it's going to be incumbent upon the school district to make sure that we get that message out, that it's not an elite school, that it is a regular school, but it's got a different focus, but that it's open to all kids fairly, and that equity piece has been addressed. And I think the school district, at least from what I've heard so far and what I've seen, is that they're taking that strongly into consideration, and I think it's going to be important for the board and the school district to just continue to give that message of it's an equitable decision and that whatever decision we make, we did so very thoughtfully and with a lot of, you know, and that's very thoughtfully, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, David.
I guess my, I don't have any questions, but my one comment is, you know, I take a step back from all of this and think about what we had, we had a problem several, several months ago, years ago. We have an overcrowding problem, and it's across the district. And we have asked the district, what is the best way to alleviate the overcrowding problem across the district? And I appreciate what you've brought to us. I see how it does, I see how it works for all students across the district, that we will best alleviate the overcrowding problem across our district by using this magnet school and bringing kids to it from the key, from there. It's, it's really brilliant to, to be thinking along those ways versus just moving it around on one side of our district, so I appreciate it. With that, I am confident in making a decision next on the 25th. Sounds like some of us may be, and we look forward to that opportunity.
Could I miss more?
Yes.
But I, if others have. The other thing that I was thinking about was there have been a number of themed schools throughout the state, and I think maybe it would be possible to look at, some have been successful and some have not. And so, and I don't want a huge research project out of this, but for those that haven't been successful, can you help us understand why? And would that help focus where we want to go with a theme?
I don't know, but I can try to find out.
Is that more focused for what the theme should be or helping you decide?
Yes, I thought we were looking at both.
Well, next week, or the next board meeting, we're just looking at, are we doing a magnet school?
That's the only one?
I'm just thinking of timings for that.
Okay, down the road, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
It's spring break, right?
Yeah.
It really is a deep research project because there isn't a
Yeah.
Propository, there's no website anywhere that tells where all of the
Google it.
Magnet schools are, which have been successful, which have grown their populations, which I met, we was, it has, you really have to go district by district and start digging, is the only way to do it.
Anything else, Dr. Jarvis?
No. I, I again appreciate the fact that we did so well on the two-hour board meetings.
I know.
And this is about the second one now, we've added a half hour, but thank you for taking the time for this.
I know, okay. You weren't here for our three or four-hour ones. All right, with that, this meeting is adjourned at 8:37 PM.